Everybody's real quiet, so I'll call our meeting in order. I appreciate y'all's patience. We're a couple of minutes late getting started. The first item on our agenda this evening is to call our meeting to order and establish a quorum. We do have a quorum of our board team members here. Mr. Hernandez is not here. I'm anticipating him being here, but he is not here as of yet. Our next item, item two on our agenda, is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Jared Gray. He's a youth pastor at San Angelo First Assembly, a former student at Central High School, and someone that's stuck around here to take care of our youth. So we appreciate you being here, and we'll let you lead us in our prayer this evening.
So let's bow and pray. Father, we love and we thank you for the opportunity we have to be here, and what an honor it is, Lord, to serve in the capacity that we do for students across this great city that you've placed us in. Lord, I pray that you would continue to give wisdom and guidance to our board, our teachers, Lord, our faculty and administrators, God, that you would guide them and give them wisdom to make accurate decisions, Lord, that you would have them to make to guide the minds of the next generation. Lord, I pray that you would continue to bless our schools, that your hand would be upon them, you would keep them safe. Lord, as we go throughout the rest of this school year, I pray that your favor would be upon us, Lord, that you would keep our students safe, and in your hands. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. Next, we have our pledges. We're honored this evening to have some students from McGill Elementary School. We have Wayne Davis, who's in the first grade. We have Harmony Little, who's in the fourth grade, and we have Ava Claire Lara. And I'll ask them to come forward and lead us in our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Good job. And if any of the parents or folks that came with these young folks would like to take a picture, let them come back and stand up there, and y'all can take a picture. Thank y'all for being here. Next up is item four on our agenda is recognitions. We're going to recognize virtually some of our students at Central High School. Farah, are you going to do that? Rodney? Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Rodney Chant, our executive director of athletics, and he's telling me that Farah's taking care of it. So we'll let Farah. We'll turn it over to Dr. Gomez.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. Actually, I'm simply going to pass it over to Coach Davis. Coach Davis, now remember, I told you that you are featured on the TVs here in the boardroom. So I am giving you that disclaimer, and also to our viewers who are joining us by TV, we are also live streaming on Facebook right now, so that our families and our student athletes can be watching the virtual recognition. So we're very excited to have Coach Davis and to hear about our Central High School football team this evening. So Coach Davis, we're going to turn it over to you at this time. Let's try again. Let's see if you can hear me now, Coach.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, here we go. We're going to try that introduction again. Let's see. We might have had some technical difficulties. All right, we'll give another introduction for you, Coach.
All right.
You might not have heard Mr. Lehman there. So Mr. Lehman introduced Coach Chant, our executive director of athletics. And I said, actually, well, Coach Chant pointed to me, and I said, actually, I was simply going to turn it over to you, Coach Davis, to recognize Central High School's football for your performance this fall semester, and we're happy to have you and hear more about your fall season.
Do I just like let you know that we need to go to the next slide?
Absolutely.
Okay, we're ready. There's our team picture from this year, from the 2020 Bobcats. You know, I thought we had a great year. We overachieved, really. We had a ton of adversity, not, you know, we had the same adversity a lot of teams had, but we also had to start with three games on the road against really tough opponents. And I think it made us a lot better football team, but it also was a tough road, you know, and I think it kind of made us tired, too, to where at the end of the year, you know, with some other issues that we had, it didn't finish the way we wanted to. But I'm very proud of these guys, you know, they persevered and overcame a tremendous amount, and it was a joy to coach. The superlatives that we have for this group will be the next one. Maybe one more forward. Okay, here's some of the things that were accomplished. We had, we won by district, and then we had several that were all academic all-state. We had nine, we had six. Maybe it's going through them like that, I'm sorry. But it's, we had six school records broken, and then we had 11 consecutive playoff firsts. So, you know, we're very proud of that. This group's very proud to have been a by-district champion. They weren't a district champion, but they were a by-district champion. So first time we won a gold ball in a couple of years. So, you know, we're excited about that. And then the all-district selections will be the next one. Twenty-two all-district honorees. Those 22 honorees are quarterback Malakai Brown, wide receiver Seth Leveque, wide receiver Jalen Life Festy. Do we have pictures of these guys, or is it just this? Because I'm not positive about that. There we go. Kayden Box was honorable mention all-district. We can just slide through them there. Malakai was academic all-state and offensive MVP of the district. Joseph Canaba was academic all-state. Ty Casey was first-team all-district outside linebacker. Orelli Sadeo was academic all-state. She's one of our football operations. Matavious Dobbins was second-team all-district. Kayden Hammeister was honorable mention all-district. Ashton Hartsfield was first-team all-district punter and honorable mention on defensive Malik Haywood was honorable mention all-district at, well, at defensive back. Tyler Hill was second-team all-district receiver. Weston Hill was an honorable mention all-district receiver. Dewayne Huff, first-team all-district defensive tackle. Will Jost was an academic all-state. Jalen Life Festy was first-team all-district inside receiver. Seth Leveque was an academic all-state and also first-team all-district wide receiver. And Bryson McNutt was second-team all-district linebacker. Kobe Moore was honorable mention all-district and all-state hair. That was a joke. I can't hear if you laughed or not, but. Matthew Muntz, he was academic all-state. Chris Muntz was first-team all-district offensive tackle. And then Samuel Navarrete was an honorable mention all-district running back. Trip Noble was academic all-state and also honorable mention all-district inside receiver. Jacob Odell was academic all-state and also honorable mention all-district safety. Caesar Saldana was first-team all-district defensive end. Eli Salinas was second-team all-district defensive tackle. And Andre Sanchez was honorable mention all-district offensive tackle. Kaisen Snelson was an honorable mention all-district safety. Mark Wilson was academic all-state. And we want to thank you, God, the board and our administration and student athletes, and especially the parents that allow us to work with your youth. And it's an honor for us. It's a great school district. We love being a part of it. And once again, thank y'all for recognizing us today.
Thank you, Coach Davis.
Thank you.
Mr. Lehman, that concludes Coach Davis's student recognition this evening.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Coach Davis. Our next recognition is recognition of athletic trainers and school nurses, and Dr. Gomez is going to do that for us as well. This group of folks have really had a challenging year, and we appreciate y'all being here very much.
I'd like to end that Zoom meeting really quick. If you can message Ms. Blair, it'll be back up in one second. Ms. Griffin, could you come forward? Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. One of our six district goals is to sustain a safe and secure environment, because we believe and research shows that is how students learn best. As stated in our core beliefs and commitments, we believe in the value of each employee, and we invest in highly qualified human capital. Tonight, it gives me great joy to recognize and show our most sincere gratitude to 31 of our most highly qualified and dedicated professionals. Our athletic trainers, registered nurses, licensed vocational nurses, and certified medical assistants are genuinely and deeply committed to the health, wellness, and safety of our students and their families. Over these last 11 months, these professionals have devoted countless hours to the health and safety of others. They have been instrumental in implementing and ensuring observance of our district safety protocols during the COVID-19 pandemic and will continue to do so as long as needed. In addition, beyond the pandemic, these champions for health, wellness, and safety provide care and services to their students. And these professionals truly believe they are their students. They provide care and services to students and families daily and go beyond what is expected. Some were unable to join us tonight for various reasons and prior commitments. For those present, as I call your name, please come forward to be recognized and accept our heartfelt appreciation. First, for athletic trainers, Central High School, Jenny Corbett. Absolutely. Central High School athletic trainer, Leon Pratt. Central High School athletic trainer, Sarita Ponse De Leon. Our two Lakeview athletic trainers were unable to be here this evening, but we'd like to recognize them, Kelsey Vanderberg and Troy Wildy. If we could get a picture of our athletic trainers, one ran over here from working an event and has to go back to the game to provide services to our athletes. So Dr. Detloff, would you mind jumping in that picture with them? We want to make sure we're socially distanced and safe. There we go. We are not breaking any social distancing guidelines. Smile through those masks. Thank you very much. Next, we move to our school nurses and healthcare professionals. From Central Maine, Kristy Torres. Central Oaks, Dolores Canales. Lakeview and Carver, Cheryl Walls. Glen, Wendy Palhemus. Unable to be here this evening, from Lee, Ashley Springer. Lincoln Middle School, Sean Godfrey. District-wide, sorry, Kristy, I can't read with my glasses on. District-wide, and our newest member on our team. No, she's not here. Kristy is not here. That's right, I'm looking. You told me Kristy. Well, I still want to recognize her. District-wide, she is our newest member on our team. We just got her on board, Kristy Petry. So give her a round of applause. All right. Then moving to Altaloma, starting with our elementary, Lisa Stewart. Austin Elementary, Selena Poindexter. Bel Air and Holloman, Brandy Eisenbach, unable to be here this evening. And Tabitha McLaren. We have two for Bel Air and Holloman. Also unable to be here this evening, from Bonham, Cory Stewart. Bowie and McGill, she had prior commitments as well, Tiffany Snowden. And Charlene Sierra. And for Bradford Elementary, Ginger Hurst. For Crockett Elementary, Crystal Garen. For Fan and Elementary, she was unable to be here this evening, but let's still recognize, Morgan Henry. For Fort Concho Elementary, she's out on maternity leave, but we'd like to recognize, Lauren Hahn. For Glenmore Elementary, Don Dusek, she's out this evening. Goliad Elementary, Katie Hemendel. For Lamar Elementary, Cassie Walden. For Reagan Elementary, Whitney Ramirez. San Jacinto, Roxanne Davila. Santa Rita, unable to be here this evening, Ashley Bates. And our nurse with administrative duties, that means everything under the sun that's not done by these wonderful nurses and healthcare professionals up front, Monica Porres, who also has Crockett and Paze. All right, so Dr. Detloff, find a space up there, too.
I'm going to turn that over to, looks like Ms. Wood. Ms. Wood with Molly in the background, Ms. Johnson.
Yes. Ms. Johnson will be joining me, too, special assistance. As y'all know, January is School Board Recognition Month nationally and in the state of Texas. So tonight, we honor each of you, although our appreciation extends well beyond this month. On behalf of San Angelo Independent School District, our administrators here tonight in the community of San Angelo, it is a privilege to say thank you to each of you. Lanny Lehman, Gerard Gallegos, Amy Mizell Flint, Bill Dindel, Max Parker, Art Hernandez, we look forward to thanking him later, and Dr. Taylor Kingman, for the critical part you play in fulfilling the district's mission to produce future-ready graduates. Thank you for your unwavering dedication to every child receiving a relevant and inspiring education, and to ensuring that our students are ready for the world when they leave our halls. At this time, I also invite you to take a look at each of your colleagues and recognize one another for joining you in this journey of service and dedication. You represent different voices in districts and bring unique strengths to this board, and together, you steer the course to stay focused on the best interests of our students. This year's School Board Recognition Month theme, as designated by the Texas Association of School Boards, TASB, is navigating to success. When we look at the meaning of "to navigate," it seems particularly fitting this year. To navigate is to plan and direct a route or course, or to sail or travel over a stretch of water or terrain, especially carefully or with difficulty. This school year, the board has planned and directed our district, especially carefully and at times with difficulty, through the challenges arising from COVID, as well as facing and rising to other trials, while also identifying opportunities. San Angelo ISD was well-poised to take on this unique school year, thanks to your guidance and support of safety protocols to protect our students and staff, a virtual learning platform option, the SAISD Virtual Academy, and most recently, the Community Wide Literacy Initiative, San Angelo Reads. You are all leaders who care deeply for our community and who invest an extensive amount of your time and talent into the work that matters most for our future, educating our children so they will be the next generation of leaders and contributors to our society. Now, we would like to present each of you with a certificate and the small token of appreciation that is already beside you, a special gift created by talented SAISD plant science floral design high school students. I'm going to list their names because they did such a beautiful job, and we are so proud of them, I know you all are. Mia Munoz, Anisa Garcia, Chesney Trevino, Krishna Castillo, Navaya Martinez, Alana Franklin, Alyssa Contreras, Skye Luera, Gaiselle Palacio, and Yolanda Ramirez. And those boxes that surround the beautiful floral arrangements were also by some of our construction students. So with your support and guidance, San Angelo ISD prepares our students to attain their individual hopes and dreams with the opportunity to pursue career pathways like web development, healthcare, and plant science and floral design. May these beautiful arrangements represent our appreciation and the continuing focus on helping students be prepared for their individual futures. And of course, you can share these arrangements with your spouse or family members, because we know that not only does this take your time, but it's also their support and letting you come spend this time with us every month, and more often than that. So when I call your name, please join us in the front to receive your certificate. And then we'll ask you to remain, again, so we can get a picture with Dr. Detloff. So Molly's got the certificates, so we'll be passing those out. So we've got Mr. Gerard Gallegos, board secretary, representing single-member District Six. Mrs. Amy Mizell Flint, representing single-member District Four. Mr. Bill Dindel, who I learned is on the COSE DC Board as well, busy man, who is our treasurer and represents single-member District One. Mr. Lanny Lehman, who has been serving for 20 years, and he is our board president and Mr. Max Parker, vice president, representing single-member District Five. And of course, we're thinking of Art, who he represents our single-member District Two. We'll make sure he gets his thank yous as well. And Dr. Taylor Kingman, representing single-member District Three. Yes, you're in a great spot. So if y'all remain standing and take a picture, Sharlin's going to help us out with that. Thank you for your dedication, support, and guidance. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Wood and Mrs. Johnson. Appreciate that. Our next recognition, oh, excuse me, that's all of our recognitions. I did forget to read our script, so I guess I could read that now. Good evening and welcome. As the president and board of trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting here this evening, our regular meeting of the board. I also welcome those of you who are watching the tape of this meeting on our access channel four. We appreciate your interest in our students. All the items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board members meet a minimum of two times per month, and most if not all the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to our reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the board of trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on each one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I'll make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda this evening. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I'll ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape might adequately reflect these proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking. And I also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this particular time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, to thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school Next item on our agenda is item five, the approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
Move for approval.
So we have a motion from Mr. Dindel, and a second from Dr. Kingman, to approve the minutes of our meeting December 7, 2020, and our meeting December 14, 2020. Are there any corrections or comments from our board team members? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item I just referenced is anyone wishing to make public comments on items not on our agenda. I do have someone wishing to make comments to our board team this evening. I'm not sure what the topic is, but I'm assuming it's not on our agenda this evening, and that's Ms. Cross. So Ms. Cross, would you please come forward at this time? And thank you for being here. We appreciate you taking the time to join us here this evening.
With all the events that have happened in the last several months, I think I would be remiss if I did not address this day in history tonight here with all of y'all. In 1931, our Texas legislator made Robert E. Lee's birthday a state holiday. On January 23, 1973, the Texas State Senate consolidated the birthdays of Robert E. Lee and Jefferson Davis to create Confederate Heroes Day, which we celebrate today, January 19th. It's a partial holiday, so state offices are still open, but employees can take a paid day off to honor Robert E. Lee, Jefferson Davis, and any of our Confederate heroes. Following, I'm sharing some of the words of James Burns, a patriot. Confederate Heroes Day and Robert E. Lee's birthday is today. Today is the day that we honor the men of the Confederate Today is the day that we honor the men of the Confederacy who fought and died during the Civil War, and we are not justifying the evil or the unjust unconstitutional practice of slavery. Slavery denied the rights given to them under the Constitution of the United States of America that all men are created equal. But today in Texas, we celebrate Confederate Heroes Day. And on this day, in 1807, one of our greatest generals was born, and the South's most beloved hero, Robert E. Lee. He was a God-fearing man and well-respected by his fellow men at arms and his foes. We honor these brave men of the Confederacy who died with honor and stayed the course. These men loved their state and their freedom and chose to fight for the Confederacy to remain loyal to their state. In 1860, men didn't consider themselves Americans first. They were Virginians, Texans, and so forth. We honor these men on this date to embrace our heritage as proud Southerners and Texans. This is not to say we are condoning the evil of slavery. Slavery is a blight on our Southern heritage, and it is to be looked on as the evil and condemnation of our past. But this day is set aside to remember individual heroic and honored Confederate Southern soldiers. Texas isn't alone in recognition of this holiday. Eight other states have similar Memorial Days throughout the year. Mississippi, Alabama, Georgia, North and South Carolina, Louisiana, Tennessee, and Virginia. And Mississippi and Alabama have a joint Martin Luther King and Robert E. Lee Day. I will always remember Robert E. Lee and our Confederate heroes on this day, and I ask that you join me. If a man throws away his traditions, he had better first make sure certain that he has something of value to replace it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cross, for those comments. We appreciate you being here. Our next item is our report sections of our agenda. First is provided to us each week by Dr. McFarland and our student enrollment report for the 17th Tuesday of school, which was January the 5th. And I think we're, I don't have that right in front of me, but we're down about 560 students. We've been really consistent, although that's not a great number considering where we were last year, but we haven't lost any additional students, and it looks like we're going to kind of level off at that number. Next up is item B, which is update on academic progress, and we've asked Dr. Ritter to take this portion of our agenda. Thanks, Dr. Ritter.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the Board. And tonight, we're bringing to you our Director of Social Emotional Learning, Lindy Lyles, who will be sharing with you a report for our academic progress just through the lens of social emotional learning in our district. So I'll turn it over to Lindy at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter, and thank you, Mr. Lehman, and thank you, Dr. Detloff, and the Board for this opportunity to talk to you briefly tonight about our social emotional learning initiative and just a little bit about how COVID honestly, as a silver lining, has helped us propel that. So I just wanted to start with the fact that I joined the district about a year and a half ago. Very, this district was already poised and looking towards the future of social emotional learning, so it was just a huge opportunity for me to be able to kind of do what I love. One of the first questions that people ask as you start any new job is, what exactly do you do? And so in getting that question, I've had the opportunity to talk to people about CASL. It's the Center for Academic and Social Emotional Learning. It is actually a national organization that researches how focusing on social emotional learning skills actually helps propel our academic skills as well. So they recently broadened their definition just this fall to really include adults and then the showing empathy for others. So they've broadened their definition for the first time in 30 years, just this fall. When you look at, I am not... When you look at CASL, there are actually defined skills that fall under five categories, and there are specific skills in each category. So starting with ourselves, being self-aware, self-managers, adding to that, social awareness, the awareness of what's going on in the settings around you, and then relationship skills. And then all four of those categories coming together to build responsible decision-making skills. And in order to get optimum results with our students or as adults, the blue circles are all of the environments that really need to align to address those areas. So this is why it's so exciting as we move forward in the future of San Angelo ISD to start looking at what we can do to better align those social emotional learning skills for all students. I just wanted to give you a couple of things that we are, that we have been able to use to help us in our endeavor in building our social emotional learning supports in the district. Panorama is one of those tools that began a pilot at least three years ago, a small pilot looking at stakeholder surveys, and then also surveying students on their SEL skills and abilities. But there's actually three parts of that. We also have the Student Success Platform. That's also part of that same company. And so this has just been a huge benefit to have a tool that gives us a way to use data to inform our plan moving forward as we build a more aligned plan. Not going to go into the data results tonight, but we did have our first survey, stakeholder survey, in the fall. We got the results right before Christmas. What I wanted to do tonight is just kind of show you how it gives us such a great visual representation of the data once the surveys come back. Of course, I chose the slide that shows one area just to celebrate broadly that our elementary students this fall reported. Increase in student-teacher relationships, increases in positive statements about rigorous expectations, the climate, the culture, and then school safety across the board was up eight percentage points in the elementary. School safety was also up, I can't remember exactly the percentage points for the secondary students as well. So I think, you know, as I mentioned earlier, your support on all of our safety protocols really made a difference as well. So it just gives us a nice visual representation to start seeing areas to celebrate and then areas that we have that we can build more supports around in the future. That's one side of, the other side of Panorama, and this is just a picture of kind of what a student dashboard would be. It's the Student Success Platform. And this is a little bit different than the survey platform. This actually, thank you, this actually gives us a look at the whole child. So it's having a place to bring in data from multiple platforms. This pulls from eSchool Plus, and it pulls in from a couple of other places. And it helps teachers and leadership teams be able to problem-solve around students' needs very quickly. So as we continue to build this, you'll see that you can pull up a student's dashboard, look at their demographics, you can see how they're doing at each grading period, and it helps teachers to diagnose areas of extra-needed support. The, just briefly to mention, the red, the yellow, and the green, all of those are cut points right now that are set by Panorama according to national statistics with multiple-tiered systems of support. The multiple-tiered systems of support being those universal practices that we look at for academics, behavior, social emotional learning, all of that kind of under one umbrella. So that's where the colors come from. And then the last thing I kind of wanted to elevate tonight was just, it's been such an opportunity this year, coming in, looking at something that could help students build skills proactively, and knowing that social emotional learning is going to be a huge focus moving forward as we look at our whole child initiative, as we look at our work with John Tanner and the Community-Based Accountability System. One of the things that I knew just coming in that most districts don't have the luxury of having is a curriculum that actually addresses teaching skills universally to students. This curriculum teaches students pre-K through 8. And that, something that I haven't said before, was just that that's pretty much where we know our biggest chance for interventions is when they're young, and that by the time they get to high school, we hope that we've, if we've done a great job providing that skill support intentionally and directly, then as they hit high school, it really is more about building into their career pathways, getting credits and those types of things. So then SEL becomes more of something that's infused into their environment and not directly taught. So with Second Step, we were able to purchase those resources for everyone. When we went into COVID in March, I thought that we were going to look at a very small pilot. But when COVID happened, and we know that just in our nation and everything that's happened in the last, I don't even know how many months it's been since March, but since March, we know that it's very important that we attend to these needs of our students and our adults. And so in just sending a text to this leadership team that I've been able to join, it was a very quick turnaround. Yes, we need to provide these supports. So again, that's something to thank you all for in your support for our district because moving forward, this will be something that we're going to be rolling out on more and more campuses. We're going to help them create plans to get more and more skill-building proactively to our students in the district. And then one last thing that goes back to Panorama is all of these companies and all of these programs kind of align. So beginning next year, beginning 21, 22, with our student social emotional learning surveys, we will actually be able to design a survey to help us gather information to see if our teaching, the Second Step curriculum, is actually having an impact on those skills. So for example, right now, we are surveying student social emotional learning skills on self-efficacy and one other thing. But beginning next year, Panorama and Second Step are going to help us align those surveys so that we will have a direct kind of way to bring in evidence to see if what we're doing here with Second Step is making a difference, making an impact on those surveys for students. So that's going to be exciting. So that's all I have, just a brief introduction, and just thank you for everything that you do. Have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Lyles. Any questions for Ms. Lyles? I know you had to present that to us last week, and we asked you to come back and do it again. So we really appreciate you doing that. And certainly good news for our students, and gives us a good picture of, you know, how our students are performing in a number of different areas. So thank you so much.
I will never pass up an opportunity.
I think we also have an update on our virtual learning platforms that Dr. Ritter's going to ask some folks to come and speak to us about, so.
Yes, thank you. We just, we felt that right now, it's a really good time for us to highlight some of the things that we've been doing virtually in our district. And we had some teachers approach us and say that they were really excited to share with the Board some of the things that have been positive for them in this experience. And so we agreed, we said, you know what, we appreciate it so much. And so today, we have three teachers, we're going through the secondary lens tonight. A teacher, an English teacher from Central High School, Molly Swetts. And we have Christina Garcia from Lakeview High School, math teacher. And Haley Love, she was a digital support teacher from Lee. And so, I've got it, let's start. And this is just a quick, just an overview of the two. You've had some questions over time about the platforms that we use in the district for supporting virtual learning of our students. You know, in line with our SAISD mission and vision, that our mission of San Angelo ISD is to engage all students in a relevant and inspiring education that produces future-ready graduates. And our vision is in pursuit of excellence. And that is something that all of us helped to develop when we went through our strategic planning. And we have our educator profile here, and I'll just highlight that. Right in the center of our educator profile, we want to be safe, supportive, and adaptable. And when we developed that educator profile, we had no idea what we were going to be encountering in the year of 2020 and COVID education, which is a new term for everyone. But in doing so, we know that the two virtual platforms of Schoology and Edgenuity that we are using to support student learning, it wasn't just about student learning, it was about student learning, but it was also about supporting our teachers. And that that is something that you as a Board and us as district administrators and our campus administrators felt very strongly about as we made some very quick decisions to get rolling at the beginning of the school year. We knew that we needed to have a strong focus in supporting the challenging work of our teachers through this unprecedented era of educating students during a pandemic. And so far, yes, it's been challenging, but we can't say enough about our amazing teachers in this district. And so you have three of them here tonight to just highlight some of the positive things that they've experienced through this time. And so we're just so appreciative, and we can't say enough. So let's give them a hand. They're awesome. We'll give them a hand again at the end, too. We so appreciate them. All right, so with this group here, we have, let me go right here. So Schoology is the virtual platform we're going to talk about first, and that is our learning management system that's in place to bridge learning from our school buildings to our students' homes when students have extended absences. San Angelo ISD teachers are integrating classroom instruction with Schoology. And our teachers who are going to talk about this today, as I said earlier, Molly Swetts, who teaches English, and she's the department head at Central High School. She's an 18-year San Angelo ISD teacher. And Christina Garcia, who is math teacher and department head at Lakeview High School, and she's a four-year San Angelo ISD teacher. So I believe Molly is first to come forward and share with us some of the highlights of Schoology.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'm going to talk to you just real briefly about the practical end of Schoology, and then I'll let Christina, my younger counterpart, talk about more of the fun and flashy sides of it. But I'm going to talk to you about it as a classroom management software and how necessary it is for us to be able to do the things that we need to do with our students who are at home. So I'm going to talk to you about putting class resources up in Schoology, about how I deal with absent students, how we deal with quarantine students, and then how Schoology allows us to manage students who have accommodations and assign things to them individually. So Matt, can you open up my Schoology? Let's see if it goes there. Okay. Okay, I'm going to show you around my first period just a little bit to show you what I do. So, okay, I'm going to show you my class resources folder first because I was a Google Classroom person, and I wanted to see if Schoology could imitate what Google Classroom does and more. And that's exactly what we're able to do. And so, hold this again. All right, so one of the great things that it allows me to do is put every single resource that my students need to access from home, but also the ones who are in class, so that when I give them a handout if they need to access it because they lose it, they can get it via the computer from anywhere and from their phones, which is nice for studying. One of the beautiful things that I can do is I can put up a live calendar that allow, when I say live, I mean that when I make a change to my document in my folder, they see the changes. And so like we scroll down to Week 2 there, and we had an unexpected snow day, and I was able to immediately go into this calendar and change that for them and so that they could check it from home. And I had warned them to do that on Friday. We might be having a snow day. So look for what it is I'm going to want you to do so that you're caught up when we go to Tuesday. And so that's one of the nice things that you're able to do with class resources. I also put up every slides presentation, every, everything that they'll need from class. And Google Classroom did this. And so this is one of the things I was really glad we were able to maintain in Schoology. But there are a lot of things that Google Classroom could not do that Schoology allows us to do. And so I'm going to show you right now that every week I set up a weekly folder for students who are absent. And so this is this week's. And so you can see that only Tuesday is live because I published it this morning. And you can see the little 1 under it. And that's because in first period, I only had one student absent. And so I'm able to individually assign that folder to only the students who are absent. And the reason that's important to me is I don't want to confuse my students who are present, and they see assignments up in Schoology. I don't want to confuse them because we're doing those things in class. And personally, I don't have them on the computer in class. So Schoology is really important to me for the ones who are not in class, okay? Other teachers use it every day, and the kids are looking at their screen in class. And that's a choice. That's an instructional choice that teachers have. I just like to be, my instruction to not be on the screen. I just like to be, my instruction to not be on the screen. And so, but when they're absent, I'm able to individually assign them a folder. And it has everything that we're doing in class imitated, not exactly because I don't give them quizzes and tests from home because that would encourage, just regular absences, obviously quarantined I do. But regular absences, I don't want to encourage absences. And you can imagine if you were in college, if you could skip on test day and take your test from home, you would have probably chosen to do that. And so I don't encourage the absences by giving them to my students who are just absent, but I do for my students who are quarantined. So I'm going to show you Thursday, just to give you an idea of what's in here. So a step-by-step of what is taking place in the classroom is imitated here in the instructions. And then there's an assignment here to get them ready for their essay test on Friday because they're missing the in-class preparation. And so everything they would need is in there, including links to the rubric and the preparation guide they would need to be ready for the next day, okay? So if a student is absent, I assign that folder to them. I take attendance while my students are working on a bell ringer, I go ahead and assign the folder to anyone who's absent. So it can work that quickly. However, for students who are quarantined, I make a separate set of folders. And these folders have a lot more in them because, for example, this is today's folder. It has a video. So during first period, I record myself and I post that video to the folders that have been individually assigned to my quarantine kids. And so they actually see me, unfortunately, every day, you know, they have to see me here with my, you know, a little mask on and my little face shield on, talking to them. And so, but they get exactly what's in class, they get it there, okay? Along with all of the instructions that they need to do and the resources that they need to have available to them. And so for my seniors, I record that during first period, I post it during second or in the changeover between first and second. But again, this folder is only visible to the student that I assign it to. And so you see the one, I have one quarantine student in first period, and that student is the only one that can see this because it's assigned to them individually. And so I can make sure that they get what they need. And one of the ways that I do that, I'm going to show you, let's see here, I'm going to show you, oh, under quarantine, I'll show you on Thursday. They actually have a quiz here that has been assigned to my quarantine students. And I have a student who has the accommodation that she gets extended time. And so one of the beautiful things about individualizing folders in Schoology is that I can go into this student's folder, into this student's quiz, and I can extend the time by half for the students' accommodations, which is not something that we could do on other platforms. We couldn't give quizzes or tests easily at all on Google Classroom, and it was very difficult to individualize. And this one does allow us to follow their accommodations from when they're at home. And so that's a really nice thing about this platform. Okay, so I walked you through the basics of how we set it up so that it can function for our at-home students, both just absent students and quarantined students. What questions might you have for me before I turn it over to someone more fun?
Any questions, Dr. Kingman?
Once quarantining hopefully is over, you feel like Schoology is beneficial to your absent students just for your normal absentees as well as keeping them progressing throughout the weeks and the days?
Absolutely. I've found that for school trips now, if I know that I'm going to have, you know, 10 kids out on the speech and debate tournament, and there's something that I really need them to hear me say, I post a video for them also. And so there are times when it's very, very helpful to, we know we're going to have a lot of absences. As you know, the spring, we very often have heavy absences with sports and those extracurriculars, although we haven't had as many this year, but we will start to have more travel hopefully. And when that happens, those kinds of absences, it really will be helpful just to keep this going. You know, we got, we learned how to use Loom last spring, and because of that, now we're finding that we can integrate that all the time. I had a teacher who told me that she, on Friday, posted a video and her students contacted her over the weekend and said, there's no audio on it. And she said, oh no, but she said luckily I had my laptop at home and I just sat down on Saturday morning and re-recorded it and re-put it up. And those kids did not miss out on that instruction because of that. So when we had our virtual Fridays, I was able to teach virtually via video to all of my students in that way. And I just really think that, yes, as we move forward, that using Schoology will allow us to continue staying in contact with them. There's one other thing that I'll show you, and that's this little envelope here in the corner allows me to, my kids to contact me. And I can communicate with them that way. They can email me, they can contact me in other ways, but this way, it not only puts it here, but it sends me an email immediately and a text alert immediately that I have a message from a student in Schoology. And so I'm not going to miss it, I can go to it immediately and respond to them when they're having issues. So it's a great communication tool.
Can you access the teacher side of Schoology from your phone as well?
I can, yes. It's, it won't do everything quite as powerfully, but I can communicate with them, post things to all my classes et cetera from my phone. So that's very helpful, yes. Anything else? It does, it does take some time. When we first started, it took more time, we're getting better at it, just like you do anything else, but the setting up of the folders. I start working on the next week, early in the week. So every time I have a spare time after school during conference, whenever, I go ahead and work on the next week's schedule. And I would say it probably takes me two hours a week to put up my folders for the following week, two to three, depending on how many quizzes or tests or whatever I need to put up for my quarantine students because those take time with individual questions. But like I said, I'm getting better at it as I go and the time is shrinking down as we go, I'm learning some shortcuts. Anything else? All right, thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, I'm Christina Garcia, I'm the Lakeview High School teacher. So, oops, I did something. At the beginning of the year, with all the uncertainty of how this year was going, my coworker and I just kind of dove into Schoology because we didn't know if there was going to be another shutdown, or we didn't know how many kids were going to be in and out of quarantine. So we kind of just decided to work solely through Schoology. And so we kind of just started in July actually playing with Schoology, figuring things out, learning things, learning how things work, and we still kind of are learning new things about it. But we work completely out of Schoology. Our kids don't ever come into the classroom and not get on Schoology. We tried to do kind of a flipped classroom thing, but we, the kids had just came from virtual and they didn't like it, so we went back to in-person instruction and then everything else was just on Schoology. So we've kind of learned a ton of benefits from Schoology, and I mean, I could sit here all day and talk about all the things we've learned, so I'm not going to do that though. So just a couple of, I found three of, that I felt the most important things were, and one of them was the automatic feedback. Kids like to know exactly what they got on an assignment right away. And we try to put all of our assignments into Schoology so that soon as they hit submit, they know more or less what their grade is for an assignment. And we use other programs besides Schoology such as Delta Math, but Delta Math is also automatic feedback. And so we felt that that was kind of important. And we figured out so many ways to put assignments in Schoology so they're not doing the same thing over and over. And we have a sandbox that we kind of both build out of, and we both work at the same time in the sandbox, these are all of our units. We go by unit, not by week or month or anything like that. And so I'll just click on a random unit. So we separate the unit into lessons, and then each lesson has the assignments on it and the quizzes on them. And then if there's an assignment outside of Schoology, they can just click on it and it has the link to the actual site that they work on, that they're going to work in. And they really like that automatic feedback, they like to know that they've got something. I have students that come to me, as soon as they submit an assignment, can I do corrections? Because they know that they didn't do so well. So they love to be able to have that automatic feedback. The second thing was convenience. So we've had kids in and out of quarantine since the beginning of the year, and when they're at home, they have, they miss out a lot if they don't have instruction, if they don't have their assignments. And some of them are out for weeks at a time. So when they come back, they're in tutorials for every single class, every single day, trying to catch up. And I feel like Schoology has kind of alleviated some of that lunchtime that they're having to give up to make up everything that they've missed. As Ms. Swet also said, it can be separated into folders. So just like hers, our, all of our units are separated into folders and subfolders and assignments and things like that. So it's not just everything loaded into one big giant folder. And that was one of the downfalls of Google Classroom is everything was just kind of loaded on there and it was very overwhelming. So the fact that everything is organized makes it a little easier for us as teachers and as students, and for the students. Also, as Ms. Swet said, the students can be individually accommodated, whether they're 504 or sped with accommodations, we can set later due dates and things like that, we can modify assignments without the other students even knowing that certain kids have later due dates or easier assignments or different assignments. So that's one of my favorite things, is the fact that we can very easily accommodate students. And then the last thing that I think is probably the most important is accountability. And you guys had asked, or student accountability, as you guys had asked if this would benefit after we get out of the whole COVID situation. And I wholeheartedly agree that, yes, this is something that we can truly benefit from, especially for kids who are in multiple sports, band, cheer, and like she said, the debate team, many, you know, different activities. And I have kids that are gone constantly, especially trainers, they're gone sometimes twice a week. So when they're gone, they're not losing instructions, losing instruction, because we can easily put all of our videos, and we recently just started doing it a little different, so I'll show you the most recent one. But we can easily put our instruction videos on there. And the way we started doing it recently was we put it in through EdPuzzle. So I'm going to have to actually go to one of my courses. So we put the videos in through EdPuzzle, and the reason EdPuzzle is great is because it does hold the student accountable. So if, if we click on the video, I hope it doesn't, okay, so we can see that, like I have two students that started the video, they were not absent today, I don't know why, but they, we can see exactly how much of the video they've watched. So if they come and they're like, I didn't, I need help on this and I don't understand it, the first thing I ask them is, well, have you watched the video? And sometimes they try to get away and they say, yes, I did. So we could easily check to see if they did in fact watch the video. So I love EdPuzzle, and EdPuzzle is embedded into Schoology, so they don't even have to leave Schoology most of the time to get, to get on, to get their assignments done. So I really love that we can actually hold the students accountable through Schoology. And it's just, it makes things a lot easier, not for, not only for me, but for the students as well. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Any questions for?
Yes, ma'am. It does, it has, just like everything, it has its downfalls. So yes, it does because we're, it's easier to monitor the classroom because you can clearly see whether or not they're working on their assignment. But it also is its technology, so it's a little bit easier for the students to get off task, but it's easily corrected at the same time. So. I know there's, there is a way to do that. I do not do that, I just walk around the room and kind of monitor. But I know that there are programs that allow you to see what each kid is doing on their screen. I just walk around because sometimes when they're, when they're struggling with something, they're just sitting there, and it's not because they're not doing anything or they don't want to, it's because they don't understand, but they don't want to ask. So I kind of just look out for those kids instead of looking on a screen, because on their screen, it just looks like they're doing nothing. So, yes, ma'am. Each class? I have a total of... One class is about 20 to 25 kids. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you walk around and visit with the students, I think that's a, that's a highlight.
They actively monitor that, that's for sure, but...
Thank you so much, Ms. Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Christina. And lastly, we have Haley Love, and she's going to just briefly tell us a little bit about Edgenuity. Edgenuity is our video-based interactive instructional platform that's being used by our students who've chosen the Virtual Learning Academy. As we know, TEA said to us that we had to provide an option for Virtual Learning Academy for students who wanted to not be coming in person at all. So every nine weeks, we have to provide that option to all of our students in the district. And we started off with more students who were in our Virtual Learning Academy but have gradually kind of migrated back to in-person, but we do still have a substantial number, probably about 2,000 students or so, who are in our Virtual Learning Academy across all of the levels. And so Haley is a teacher, one of our digital support, digital support teachers at Lee Middle School. And she's going to talk to us a little bit about what the experience is for her. So that is her job this school year, is she works and is the virtual learning teacher for those students at Lee.
Hello, thank you all for having me here tonight. I would just like to highlight some of the great things that I have seen this virtual learning platform do for our students this year, since it has been my world for this last semester and going into this new semester. Something I've seen is that our students are developing skills to become the future-ready learners that we have in our learner profile. So they are building on their self-discipline, their accountability, and their time management, as well as many other things that our middle schoolers specifically, we don't typically see that skill level quite yet. And so for us to watch them and see them experience that has been very beneficial, and it has come from this virtual learning platform that we're using. Our students are also advocating for themselves a lot when they are in need of assistance or when they are communicating with their teachers. So part of this program is that it is self-paced, so our students are all ideally meant to be at the same progress, but because we have students in special populations as well as our GT students and our students in the general education, they all kind of go at a different pace in this program. So when they are in need of assistance, those students are really advocating for themselves in coming to us when they need that help. So our students do have, the Edgenuity program offers messaging, and so it allows the students to reach out to us, and they can schedule times to just communicate with us or even video conference with us so that we can provide that support that they are in need of. Like I said, it does allow our students to work at their own pace. And so something that I have really seen that has been incredible this year is that our special populations are thriving in this Edgenuity program. Of course, there are going to be those few students that may not... that may not be working to the potential that they are able, but a lot of our students are using this to their privilege and they are taking this time to really focus on what they need. Since our Edge Annuity program offers instruction videos to them, our students can sit down and take notes as needed. They can also pause the videos. They can re-watch the videos as many times needed so that they can get the information they need to be successful on the platform. It also offers summaries and intros, as well as just small assignments to quizzes, to projects and unit tests. So our students are not, we're not seeing a gap in our students when they are coming back in person because this program aligns with the TEACs that our students are following in person. So that's something that's been really great for our, our kids is that they know that when they're coming in, that they are on a very similar, if not the same page, if they do choose to come back to that in-person learning. Our parent-teacher communication, as well as our student communication, has been so valuable to us during this time because it is really what we are having to use while we, our students are in the virtual learning platform. So we do keep communication logs where we are constantly in connection with our parents or our students in some ways. So whether that means that a student is messaging us daily because they need a quiz or a test unlocked, or if they are contacting us because they need clarification or assistance in an activity, they can reach out to us. But I've also communicated with so many parents on a daily basis because they are curious about what their student's progress looks like or they are needing to know what their student needs to do to be successful in this program. So some of the ways that us as digital support teachers and our educators as a whole in the school district are helping our virtual students, something we have developed at Lee is monthly newsletters. And so it's very, a very simple newsletter, but it's sent out every month to our students to give them the valuable information that they need each month to keep them informed about what's going on on campus, but as well of what applies to them as virtual students. So this is our January newsletter, which you'll see their student and parent information. One of the things that we have recently begun with our virtual learning platform is we have developed Saturday tutorials available for them. And so that was one of our most important things that we wanted to communicate to our students this month, which is what you'll see up top. And then, of course, we have our important dates. So for example, yesterday was a holiday for our students. So just making sure that they're in the know about that because our students aren't always follow, or aren't paying attention to the calendar since they are at home. So we want to make sure that our students have that information given to them directly in multiple ways. And then, of course, our useful links are what we have kept for our students year-round just so that they can benefit from all of the advantages that our virtual learning platform has for them. So they are able to see their Home Access Center, which allows them to see their grades and their attendance. And then we have also created videos for them that show them what is, they're capable of doing in Edge Annuity. So this is the course map, checking their attendance and their session logs. And then, of course, the student tools. And this is how we are able to offer accommodations for our students in the program. So they're able to have their, their quizzes and stuff read to them. They're able to use the notes that they need if that's necessary. So the kids are able to have those tools readily available for them to accommodate them. And then also something that we have made sure that our students are aware of this year, and this is something that our educators have really worked to help our students with as we have requests to see your counselor. And so with our students being at home, we really want to make sure that their social and emotional learning experiences are still being valued and seen. So our counselors offer that request to visit with them through video conferencing as well. And so we offer video conferencing. Do you mind going back to the slide? Sorry. We offer the video conferencing. We offer that request to see a counselor in the Saturday tutorials. We also have those frequent parent phone calls and parent emails to make sure that our parents are actively involved and collaborating with us as educators to help our students be successful. And then, of course, for our students that we're really working to get, to be as involved as they can be in their own learning and take that accountability. We off, we even have our at-risk coordinator involved with us to do those home visits to make sure that our students are being checked on, but that they are just, they are growing as learners. So that's really what our Edge Annuity platform is working towards for our students. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Questions for Ms. Love?
Ms. Love, do you feel like Edge Annuity itself has been ample in responding to you and your needs as a teacher when you're working with it?
Yes, absolutely. Something that's really great about Edge Annuity is that it is an instructional video-based program. So that is what truly drives the instruction for our students. And so that gives me the opportunity to truly support my students as needed. As a special education teacher in a normal year, that's kind of been what my life has revolved around, is being able to support my students in any way that their individual needs may be. So it allows me to do that.
Sorry, one more question.
Absolutely.
And this may be a Jana question too, but as far as, you know, one of the things we've worried about with virtual learning is those kids coming back next year and being where we need them to be. Do you feel like through Edge Annuity, you'll have an idea of where those kids are falling, where, at a time that allowing y'all to intervene during this current year?
Definitely. So something that, one of the really big roles of us as digital support teachers is we are constantly monitoring our students' progress. So we can actually see how far along our student is in each course and there's even mastery rates that are in the Edge Annuity program. So we can monitor those to see how our students are doing and what we need to work on. And the way that the quizzes and the assignments are labeled, it actually allows us to see, to match it up with the TEACs and see what they are needing more attention to.
Any questions? Are there any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
How many students do you have in the virtual learning Saturday? Is it an average or do they keep coming back Saturday after Saturday? Or do they, do they keep coming back? I assume they like it.
Absolutely. So something that, our numbers have fluctuated. However, something I have seen is our number, our kids are very consistent once they've been once. I mentioned that social and emotional learning experiences I've seen from our kids that they love and they crave that social interaction when they are there in Saturday school, or Saturday tutorials. So they are there to not only receive the tutorials that they need from a teacher, but to be able to interact with other students in a very small setting, small and safe setting. It brings joy to them. And so that's something we've really noticed. Our numbers, we kind of see a trend when they are, when it's the beginning of the nine weeks and all of the kids are on track, there's maybe a little bit of a lesser number. But the more that we communicate with the parents and let them know, remind them that that is what's going on, we see an increase in our numbers. Our students definitely can communicate between the Edge Annuity platform as well as Schoology, but because they are home-based, they are not having those social interactions. However, a lot of them are involved in extracurricular activities with the school, such as athletics, band, or choir. And so many of them come for those programs still.
Are you going to explain myself very, very well? You said that they like the interaction on Saturday because it's small. So do they have that same interaction with their friends during the week?
No, ma'am, they don't because they're learning from their, the online program at home.
And Mr. Lehman, let me remind our audience that this is being taped. And so sometimes some of the audio is not coming through. So I just want to make sure that we stick to the reporting segment.
Right, yeah, and I've kind of stretched the rules a little bit because this is a meeting of the public, of the board held in public. And we're asking, we're allowing people from the public to ask questions, so. But interesting material, and I wanted to make sure that we got as many questions as we could. So thank you, Ms. Love, for, for your comments.
Mr. Lehman? I wanted to, oh, did you have a question?
I, just a comment.
Oh, yes.
Sorry. So I just wanted to, first of all, thank all three of you for being here. But, so I have a 10th grader who has, is in school and he's, you know, he's missed a few days here and there. And so we've used Schoology both in school and outside of school. And I have a 5th grader who actually did the Edge Annuity platform for nine weeks. And so I've seen both of these firsthand. And I just wanted to let you know that, that even my kids have noticed how you all and all teachers have basically had to relearn your profession overnight practically. And so I wanted to thank you all for your hard work. And one thing, just to answer Ms. Casper's question, my, my 5th grader, her, her online support teacher would actually, once a week, have a Zoom meeting where all the kids can get together and kind of talk about Schoology or talk about what's going on in their life. And, and my daughter, during those nine weeks, looked forward to that every Thursday at 2:00, I think it was. And so there are opportunities provided, you know, in some schools. I'm assuming it would be harder in a middle school situation, but in elementary school, they're doing that. But, but I just wanted to thank you all and all teachers for everything that you do, especially this year.
And I think we all have to remember that we can't provide everything in a virtual format that's provided in the classroom. And we're required to have a virtual format. We're doing the best we can with that. I think we're doing a great job, but the overwhelming majority of this board and, and I think our, our community expects students to be in the classroom. So again, we appreciate teachers relearning their profession and doing everything they can to make sure they meet the needs of our students. It's been a really challenging half a year thus far and we, we appreciate y'all.
And just to highlight, focusing on our learner profile. Again, when we developed our learner profile in our district, it was well before any of this happened. But we look at that now and realize just that work in front of that really has helped us to empower our teachers, to provide for our students, to become those communicators, collaborators, critical thinkers, and creators in a way that we never imagined before. The learner profile took on a whole new meaning. But again, thank you so much, ladies. We appreciate your time and your, they just really wanted to come forward and share some of their perspective with you from, as teachers regarding our, our virtual platforms. So thank you so much and we give them a round of applause. We appreciate everything you do and all of our teachers.
I had one more comment, I had one more comment too.
Oh, yes, sir.
I, I, mine was late, but I, I have a family of educators, uncles and sisters that were, of course, they're all retired now. And we were discussing this here not too long ago by phone. And they are very proud of all of you that have had to step up and do this. And, and they've seen this from their teacher friends, how this works. And they were just going, I wish we had had this or this technology back 10, 15, 20 years ago. But they're very, very proud of all these young teachers, all you teachers, that have stepped up and what y'all are doing and how y'all are helping these kids and how we're coping with all of this. And they are very, very proud of you. And I'm very proud of you as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you to Lindy Wiles. And you can see how these things go together. We're, you know, with social, emotional learning, it's something we're focused on as well. And just all the different facets of our team. We've had a lot of change and challenge this year, but a firm foundation for providing for student benefits. So we appreciate your support in all of this and we thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks for that report. Our next report is Item D in our reports section, which is the TAPER report. And we have a public hearing for TAPER. And Ms. Hollihan's going to help us with that.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. For Dr. Detloff. Annually, every district is required to hold a public hearing to report educational performance and the Texas Academic Performance Report, known as the TAPER. The TAPER contains board information, which includes board goals required by House Bill 3, which is not part of the TAPER. So we'll talk about that in a few minutes. And an itemized list of information that is updated or what is not updated information in the TAPER report. So let me give you an example of that. Updated information is our, the school district's demographics, college and career, and military information. But assessment information is not going to be updated. So that's going to be interesting because some of the information's going to be two, three years old, but some of it's only going to be a year old. So we'll talk about that in a little bit. There's going to be, under Section 1, your PMS Financial Standard Reports. That is 2018-19 Financial Actual Report. And you're getting the actual report because we are just finishing up on the audited report for 1920 right now. Section 2 is the district's performance report, special education determination status, district goals and performance report. Section 3, your campus performance reporting goals and the performance objective. Section 4 is report on violent and criminal incidents. Section 5 is students' performance in secondary institutions. And another piece that's not required in the TAPER, but I included it in our TAPER, is college credits earned by San Angelo High School students. And in Section 6, the glossary. So let's talk about district ratings. Due to COVID, all districts and campuses in the state of Texas received the label of not rated, declared state of disaster. And that's interesting because when we talk about the district accreditation status, which includes the accountability rating, they go back two years and use our accountability rating of a B. They use the financial rating, A Superior, from the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. The, the, what's that called? First, yes. Acronym, thank you. I was thinking of that word. So as a district, we are accredited. So I want to highlight a few things. Let's look at some of our, our programs. Our district with this TAPER, we had 14,514 students. Our bilingual program, ESL, we had 4.9% of our students in that program. Career and Technical Education, 9th through 12th grade students only. Of the 14,514 students, 46.3% of, oh, I'm sorry. Of our 9th through 12th grade students, 46.3% of our students were in career and tech education classes. Gifted and talented students, we had 3.9% identified as GT. 6.2% of our students were identified as 504. 1.3% of our students were identified as dyslexia and 10.9% of our students were identified as special ed. We had 57.4% of our students identified as economically disadvantaged. And I'm gonna not identify all of those, but 0.9% of our students were identified as homeless. 4.9% of our students were military-connected and 50.5% of our students were identified as at-risk. Our attendance rate for the 1920 school year was 94.9%, which was slightly up 0.1%, a tenth of a percent higher than the previous year, but lower than the state. The state average was 95.4%. Our annual dropout rate was point, one point, I am sorry. I can't read that. Thank you. 2.1%, which was a decrease from the previous year of 0.3%. Again, it's still higher than the state and we don't want to be higher than the state. Our graduation rate was 93.5%. rate was 93.5%, but it, and, and an increase from the previous year of 0.2%. Our college career and military ready graduates was an increase from the previous year of 2.3%. Higher than the state, which is obviously you can see is 72.9%. We're doing a great job there. Our college ready graduates was 63.9%. And our dual credit courses, annual graduates, and this is a yippee, you, we are rocking it there, 56.6%. And look at that compared to the state, 23.1%. And that is, congratulations to the partnership of Angelo State University and Howard College. And those are students that take dual credit courses at Angelo State University and Howard College. That is both academic and, um, career and tech courses. That is an outstanding partnership. Our 2017 graduates enrolled in Texas higher institutions was 47.7%. And at the state, it was 53.4%. And what that means is our students are ready to go. We just don't have them going off to a, a university in the state of Texas. Now, that only looks at the state of Texas. It doesn't look at any of the students that go outside of the state of Texas. And we do, I'm sorry, Mr. Lehman, you're gonna-
I was gonna say, it doesn't include any that might go in the military either, does it?
No, it does not.
Okay.
No. I wanted to go back to the CTE and dual credit courses because this is the part that I included. And I pulled this right off of, um, Texas, the TEA website. I pulled it off of the reports and it was the last minute thing that I added because I was surprised to find it there. Our total CTE, Career and Tech Education students earning college credits in 2019, 2020 was 2,178 students. In the previous year was 2,043. That is 10,481 credit hours. Our total students earning college hours, academic and CTE, was 2,513. That is 9th through 12th, college credit hours, 12,191 hours. Think about that. And that just gives me goosebumps. I just have to tell you how far we've come with the partnerships with Angelo State University and Howard. That is unbelievable. I want to talk about, I told you I'd come back to these board goals and House Bill 3. House Bill 3 asks, asks the board and the district to set long-range plans, five years. And they ask us to look at three goals and the progress of these goals to report it annually. And that's why I really included it on here because this is an annual report. And the goals must include three. They give you the three goals to look at. One must be in early childhood literacy, aligned to third grade star results. One must be early childhood math, aligned to third grade star results. And one must be, um, college career military readiness, aligned to the graduates that meet readiness requirements. It seemed to fit right here. So the three, the three goals that we're going to look at are the percent of third grade students that score, meet grade level or above on star reading will increase from. And of course, this 36% was 2018 star results because that's the last star we had. Now, think about that. That was our current fifth graders. We have no third graders in our school, in our elementary campuses that have taken star for the last two years. It is our current fifth graders. And what we say is that they will increase from 36% to 60% by June of 2025. So it's a five-year plan. Will it happen overnight? No. How will we progress measure that? And what we will look at is our kindergarten through second grade will score tier one. And tier one is, is students on grade level on an early literacy, literacy childhood assessment from 64% to 85% by June 2025. Now, where did I get those numbers? Because as I talked to curriculum instruction and I think Ms., Dr. Ritter left me, but we look at ICE Station and we look at, um, the next steps in guided reading and we look at the beginning of the year and we look at the middle of the year and what our kindergarten and our first grade are scoring now. And they're scoring at those 64%. And what we want is if our first graders are scoring at 85%, that means 85% of our first graders are scoring at tier one. They're on grade level. So throughout the year, you guys will have, um, reports on how our kindergarten, how our first grade, how our second grade are scoring. And that's how we're going to progress measure because that's how we're going to know if our third grade, third grade students will get there in star. Because if we're not looking at kindergarten, if we're not looking at first grade, if we're not going to look at second grade, we won't know if third grade will get there. You all have put forth the, um, the resources for our students to get there. And we have the instruments to measure them now, which we didn't in the past, but we do now. And you've, you've seen, you've heard Dr. Ritter and her, um, um, department talk about that. And so I think, I think we, this is a, um, a good measure to, to, um, it's a fair measure and, and you should be able to see that growth. So in math, you can look to see that, that the percent of third grade students that scores, meet grade level or above on star math will increase from 41%. Again, a 2018 score to 65% by August 2025. And again, it's going to be whatever measure the state says, they will accept. The reason we did not put a, put a test in there is because the state has not decided what test assessment they would say they're going to approve. They're changing them all this year. And then college career medic, um, military readiness, we are just saying that, um, that what the percent of college career military readiness students that meet the threshold for college readiness will increase from 61% to 70% by August 2025. And, oh, my mouth is dry. The percent of college career military readiness students that meet the threshold for career and military readiness will increase from 34% to 50% by August 2025. The 60% that came from that goal is that 60 by 30. Do you, do you all know what that is? Most of you know. And that is that by 2030, 60% of Texas between the ages of, I'm gonna make this up.
25.
25 to 34 will be, help me out here, college or military? Correct. College or military or secondary certification. So that's where that, that 60% came from. Okay. All right. I want to talk about a few points of pride. We have a lot of points of pride this past year. Um, I want to talk about our bilingual programs. I'm going to briefly talk about bilingual programs at Bradford Elementary. And if you'll remember, we, we really didn't target bilingual. They just were, were really kind of spread all over. And, um, Kristi Diego, she came and visited. She did a board report for you in November. And we really targeted kindergarten and, I'm sorry, pre-K and kindergarten. We provide transportation for those babies and it's, thank you. And it's really exciting. Um, that program is growing every day. And, and this, this coming year, we hope to, um, increase it to first grade. So that's exciting. The continuation of our all-day pre-K. And as we look at that and hopefully maybe the expansion of that. Thank you. The redesigning of our special education program to meet, to meet behavior needs in the INSPIRE program. Increased opportunities for students to participate in PSAT, SAT, and ACT. Partly that is the, um, paying for students to take those tests, offering those opportunities in school. Um, in the past, we'd have one school offer them in school, the other school would offer them on Saturday. Now it's done during the day and it didn't happen like that all in the past. Um, I think implementing the second step curriculum K-8 that you heard Ms. Lyles talk about today, utilizing the Panorama data from staff, student, and parent surveys, the learning management system, the Schoology that you heard the teachers talk about this evening, the Universal Breakfast District-wide. This is the first year that that's happened. That's exciting. We, we've talked about that for about 10 years now. The partnership with Angelo State University and Howard College. Of course, the, the partnership with Shannon Medical Center with the Shannon Telemedicine, that's, that's been big. And then the many, many, many partnerships that we have within the community. There's too many to name. Information on the, on the TAPER report can be found on our website or in, once we post it, it'll be posted by the end of this week. Or it can be found on the TEA accreditation status website. So our website, it will be www.saisd.org. With that said, do I have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Hollihan?
Thank you.
Thanks for that report. We appreciate that.
I'm sorry. It's long.
It's okay. All right. I think we can get through our agenda pretty quick, so let's not take a break. Item 8 is our consent items A through E. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent items A through E.
Second.
We have a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our consent items. Consent item As to consider donations to the district. Those are in our board packet. We appreciate those who've, um, helped and made donations to the district. Item Bs to consider bid number 20-013, which is for miscellaneous supplies. Can, item Cs consider bid number 20-014 for curriculum and instructional materials. Item Ds consider, um, item bid number 20-009 for maintenance, transportation, and miscellaneous supplies. And item Es to consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel. I think, uh, Dr. Gomez had one in our board packet. We didn't have any at our places this evening, so there's just one, uh, new hiree there. So those are items A through E. I would remind, uh, those in the, that might be watching this or those that are here with us in person, that we discussed all these items in our pre-agenda board workshop last week. Questions or comments from our board team? Public comment? If not all in favor of our motion, please consider, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion passes. Our next item is item 9, Consider Bills and Accounts and Financial Statements for the month of December 2020.
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve our bills and accounts and financial statements for the month of December 2020. Any board comment or questions?
Mr. Lehman, as you mentioned earlier, that all these reports have been, uh, reviewed earlier in our pre-agenda meeting last week. And in addition to that, all these reports can be found online on our website, saisd.org.
Thanks, Mr. Dindal. Any public comment concerning our motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Our motion passes. Our next item is item 10. Uh, Dr. McFarland's going to get us started on considering our approval of the 2019-2020 audit report. And I know we have Mr. Stevens here as well, so thank you for being here and for your patience.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, we've had our audit completed for the 2019-20 fiscal year. Um, you've had copies of that here for, um, a few days along with Management's Letter that was presented to you. I'm going to introduce Jeremy Stevens, who is here on behalf of Edie Bailey as, uh, the lead auditor and, uh, who took up the head and lead on, uh, the district's audit for this year. And he has some, the information to present.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the board. I'm, uh, Jeremy Stevens with Edie Bailey. Uh, and our firm has completed the audit of the financial statements for the district for the year ended August 31st, 2020. Uh, I believe a copy of those financial statements were provided to you earlier. I have a brief presentation to go over some of the financial highlights. Uh, feel free to follow along either in the presentation or in the copy of the financial statements. Have them. Before I get into it, I want to say I think the audit went very well this year. Uh, we did not identify any adjusting journal entries as a result of audit procedures. Additionally, we are not reporting any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So overall, just a good, clean audit year. So that being said, the presentation, uh, beginning with our independent auditor's report. It starts on page number nine, uh, of the bound copy, and then it goes on through page number 11. I'll summarize the main points on the slide. Uh, first of all, our report does indicate that management is responsible for preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements. We generally accept accounting principles. Additionally, management is responsible for the design and implementation of internal controls. Uh, our report then goes on to describe our responsibility as auditor. Uh, as auditor, our responsibility is to express an opinion as to whether these financial statements are presented in accordance with general principles. Uh, additionally, there's a narrative in there regarding our approach to internal controls, uh, which is that we gain an understanding of the district's internal controls, design our audit procedures. However, we do not assess those internal controls to the extent that allows us to express an opinion on. So we're not expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. And lastly is our opinion found at the top of page number 10. Uh, basically states that in our opinion, these financial statements present fairly in all material respects of financial. So once again, this is an unmodified opinion, uh, over the financial statements or a clean audit report. Now, moving on to some of the basic financial statements themselves. Uh, if you're following along in the board or in the bound copy, it starts on page number 20, uh, is the first statement that I'll touch on, which is the statement of net position. And this particular statement provides a snapshot of all assets and liabilities of the district as of August 31st, 2020. Uh, on the slide, I have a very condensed version of that statement. I don't have any of the detail of the assets or liabilities or anything. Uh, but I do have a comparative column for 2019 on the, on the slide. Uh, you'll note, uh, at the end of fiscal year 2020, uh, total assets of the district were about $298 million. Uh, in the previous fiscal year, total assets were about 292. Uh, so total assets did increase year over year by about $6 million. Uh, largely what was driving that was kind of an increase in amounts that were due from other governments, primarily Texas. Uh, as far as, uh, liabilities of the district, total liabilities of the district at year end, about $238 million. Uh, previous fiscal year is about 229. Total liabilities did increase, uh, year over year by about $8 million. Uh, largely any, any increases in the liabilities were related to the net pension liability and the net other post-employment benefit liability, uh, and then related deferred influence with those. Uh, if you add it up, your assets less your liabilities at year end, August 31st, 2020, you get a net position at year end, approximately $60 million. Uh, previous fiscal year is about 62. The next statement that I'll touch on is the balance sheet of governmental funds. Uh, and this particular statement is found on page number 24 of the bound copy. Uh, again, this particular statement provides a snapshot of assets and liabilities of the district. Uh, however, this particular statement is presented, uh, on what is known as the modified accrual basis of accounting. So its focus is on current assets and current liabilities. Uh, there are no fixed assets, no property, plant, and equipment is on here. Additionally, there are no long-term liabilities. So any liabilities for bonds payable or the net pension liability or the net OPEB liability, those are excluded. These are the district's current obligations and the resources to meet those obligations. Uh, under this base of accounting at fiscal year end, August 31st, 2020, you'll see total assets, uh, approximately $59.5 million. And the previous fiscal year is about, uh, 56.9 million. Uh, so total assets did increase year over year by about $26 million. Largest asset category of the district is cash and investments. Uh, at August 31st, 2020, cash and investments is approximately $40 million. At August 31st, 2020, cash investments is approximately $40 million. Previous fiscal year is about 43 million. So there was a little bit of a reduction in cash and investments. But you see that was offset by that increase in receivables. Receivables are your property taxes receivable, amounts due from the state of Texas and so forth. You'll see August 31st, 2020, those are up to about $13.5 million. Previous fiscal year, those are about, that's kind of what offset that reduction in cash. As far as liabilities for the district, about $16 million in the current fiscal year is about 12 million previous fiscal. So total liabilities did increase a little bit, about, about $4 million. If you added up your assets less your liabilities for this particular statement, you get a fund balance at fiscal year end approximately $43.5 million. Previous fiscal year, total fund balance across all funds was about 44.8 million. Now, this slide I've included to illustrate the, the difference in the total fund balance across all funds year over year. It's divided out across different categories. You know, you have non-spendable, restricted, committed, and so forth. You'll see the total fund balance, again, that $43.5 million, which was a total decrease of about $1.3 million versus in the last year. You divide it up against the, the funds, the general fund actually had an increase in total fund balance, about $746,000 increase in general fund. And then all other governmental funds had a decrease in fund balance. And this slide specifically breaks out just the fund balance of the general fund that I referenced earlier. The total fund balance in the general fund at year end, approximately $38 million. Previous fiscal year is about that $37.2 million. So like I said, it was about a $746,000 increase. If you looked at various categories of the general fund fund balance, you'll see that the committed fund balance decreased year over year. It's about $9.6 million in the committed fund balance in the previous fiscal year. And those were amounts that were committed for construction or for capital improvements. Those were spent down so that did not, were not committed at August 31st, 2020. Unassigned fund balance for the current fiscal year, that's basically the amount available to the district fund kind of regular operating. It increased up to about 35.4 this year. And one metric that you can use to gauge the health of that unassigned fund balance is to compare it to average monthly expenditures in the general fund. I did that calculation for the district using that August 31st, 2020 balance and the fiscal year end 2020 expenditures in the general fund. I calculated out that it was approximately 3.3 times average monthly general fund expenditures. Generally, what I hear recommended is that you minimum reserve in unassigned fund, two to three times average. And the last statement that I will touch on is the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance. That's on page number 26, basically the income statement of the district. Again, I've got it summarized up on the slide. This first slide summarizes revenue sources of the district. See, total revenues of the district for the 2020 fiscal year were approximately $155 million. Previous fiscal year is approximately $143 million. Total revenues did increase year over year, almost $12 million. If you look at the individual sources, most of the increases in state revenues, that's due to the way the, the state allotment was, the calculation was changed during the 2020 fiscal year that drove that up. That was offset by a little bit of a reduction in the federal program revenue due to the reduced funding in that start. And lastly, as far as expenditures of the district, current year expenditures of the district, about $157 million. Previous fiscal year is about 145. Its total expenditures increased also year over year by about $11.7 million. If you look at the individual categories, you'll see the largest increase in expenditures is in the capital outlay account, spent on construction during the year or other capital expenditures. But capital outlay for the district in the current fiscal year is about $11 million. Previous fiscal year is about 1.2. That's kind of where bulk of the increase was in property. Largest expenditure category of the district is instruction expenditures, about $78.5 million in the current. In comparison to total district expenditures, exclusive of capital outlay, because those capital outlay operating, I exclude those. But instruction expenditures in relation to total expenditures, approximately 53% or, actually, sorry, 54%. It was about 53% left. That's it for the basic financial statements. There's two other reports that we're issuing in the back that I'll touch on very briefly. First is on page number 120, following in the bound copy. This, this report is our report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. Again, it reiterates that we're not expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. If we did report any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, those would be reported here. Again, happy to report that there are no such items. Additionally, we did not report any instances of non-compliance. And lastly is our report on compliance required by the uniform guidance. That's on page number 122. And these are our single audit reports. Each year as our, as part of our audit, we perform a single audit whereby we select a federal program of the district that's determined to be a major program based on various selection criteria. And then we perform tests of that program so that we can express an opinion as to whether the district complied with the requirements of it. For the current fiscal year, the major programs that we tested were the Title I Part A program and the special education cluster. Our opinion for those is found at the bottom of page number 122. Basically states, in our opinion, the district did comply with the requirements of those programs. Again, this is an unmodified or a clean opinion on compliance respect to those major programs. I believe that was everything I had prepared. I did want to just briefly commend the personnel of the district. 2020 was not anybody's favorite year by any means. And I think everybody figured out how to do everything differently this year. The audit was no exception. We performed the audit in a remote environment, keep our personnel safe, segregated from your personnel. But your personnel did a great job getting everything to us, passing documentation through us, through the secure portal that we utilize. But they really did help the audit go quite smoothly. That. Any questions for?
Thanks, Mr. Stevens. Questions for Jeremy?
Mr. Stevens, first, thank you for your diligence and your staff in auditing our books and making sure that we're as correct as we can get. And then the last question I would have is, is there a better opinion than unmodified?
As far as opinions go, that's the top one. So, you know, accounting, they like to use a lot of CYA, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Language, legalese or whatnot. But unmodified is about as, as, as close as, as high as we.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thanks, Bill. I knew that question would come from someone with an accounting degree like Bill. Other questions or comments? Lots of great information in here as usual and especially in the statistical part of it in the back. Information about who our largest property owners are and who our largest taxpayers are. And so that's good information and how, how we compare to last year and other years as far as our percentage of debt versus our, our tax collections. So all that's really good information. So I'd encourage our board members to review that. And if we have any questions, we can get with you at any time, I'm sure.
Sir, feel free to reach out to me directly at, at any time.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much for that report.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lehman, there's one thing I was going to say. I know, not for you, if you could, for people watching at home, you know, our, our fund balance this year has gotten a little higher and I just, as far as unassigned. And I just want to point out to everyone if they're looking at home and stuff, that's because of the uncertainty we had going into this year, not knowing what was going to happen, et cetera. So we purposely held that money back because we don't want to sit on taxpayers' money, but we also don't want to be caught with our pants down.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but thanks, Dr. Kingman. And I know we can mention, and I think Jeremy mentioned this, we spent almost $11 million in capital expenditures last year as part of our fund balance. Net investment in capital assets increased by almost $8 million, construction projects that we completed last year. So we finished a lot of projects and exactly like Taylor mentioned, we, our intent was to get started this year and make sure that we had funding necessary to, to take care of our students and not spend as much money as we've historically spent. But I would remind not only people who are watching this, but members of our board team that we've spent a significant amount of money over the last five to six years maintaining the facilities that we have and in, as well as new projects that we've, we've chosen to tackle. So thanks for that comment, Taylor. Other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion for us to approve the 2019-2020 audit report.
Second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Dr. Kingman. Any other questions or comments from our board team? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 11, to consider 2021 trustee election for single-member districts 1, 2, 3, and 4. Dr. McFarland.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lehman. And what you have before you tonight with this particular agenda item is that every two years, the district, along with the city of San Angelo, host a joint election for elect school trustees and city officials. The same poll in place at the locations or use the city, San Angelo ISD, and other entities contract with Tom Green County Administrator, Elections Administrator in order to, to come to agreement on the joint election process. This is for election dated May 1st, 2021, coming up in May, for four single-member district seats, seats or district members 1, 2, 3, and 4 are up for election this year to fill four-year terms for the board of trustees. And so attached to what you have there in front of you as part of your packet are the order of election. You'll be asked to, to call and execute the order of election as well as the inter-local agreement for the joint election and the election services contract and resolution that goes along with. Any questions?
Thanks, Dr. McFarland. Questions from anyone? There's also some dates as to important dates for when people file and when the last date to file. And it's a considerable amount of other information included in that. Other questions or comments? If not, we will, do we entertain a motion to consider our 2021 trustee election?
I'll make a motion to call the school trustee election for May 1st, 2021, execute the order of election, the inter-local agreement for joint election, the election services contract, and the resolutions.
Second. So we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Parker. Any further board comment or questions? Any public comment? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion passes. Having a closed session this evening. Item 12 is to consider superintendent evaluation contract and salary. We're able to do that under Texas Government Code 551074 to discuss personnel matters. So we'll do that. Before we leave, I'll make sure that we cover our announcements. Our financing pre-agenda board workshop is on Monday, February the 8th, 2021, at 5:45 PM. And our regular board meeting next month is on another Tuesday, Tuesday, February 16th, at 5:45 PM. So we'll go into closed session again under Government Code 551074. Okay, I think we got enough back to finish our meeting. We just left our closed session, at which we worked on our superintendent's evaluation contract and salary. That's, and then we'll report that we're in progress on that. And we'll make sure we keep Dr. Detloff informed on how we're progressing with that. But our, our goal is to have that done in February. So we moved it up a whole month from where we've previously done it. So we'll do that. And I don't think we have any other board business unless somebody has something we need to put on our future agenda. And here, no objection, we'll stand adjourned.